All right, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thanks for coming to the first audio of TPA GCISD Canada Forum. All four candidates were invited. Two have been able to go, Louis and Dave. The other two candidates declined. They had prior obligations. So glad to have Dave Stein and Louis Sullins join us tonight for this panel. We also have a wealth of experience here between Tracy Fisher and Dave Omen. Tracy is the current, on the current CAPL ISD School Board, and Dave Omen is the former Carroll ISD trustee. And now I'll just let our two panelists introduce themselves.
Tracy Fisher, you just sat out ten years on the CAPL School Board. I was a parent for a long time, very involved and engaged in the schools. I started the CAPL Gifted Association to raise all boats, right? Our star test kind of lowered the ceiling, and we want to keep that ceiling up for all kids. So then I got involved, started going to school board meetings for about six years before I ran. I never really wanted to run at all, and then one day I was seeing the audience, like, you know, they might hear my voice a little bit too. So I ran, and been serving for ten years. Also, we're active in the legislative, in the legislative committee for tasking. Been doing that for about seven years. And so I testify, go down to Austin a lot, and I'm just really proud to be here. You guys are our neighbors. There's a border between us, and sometimes I'm glad. That's enough.
Hey, I'm Dave Omen. I would like to add to Tracy though, because I was serving in Carroll and working with the surrounding districts, also going down to Austin, and I've seen her at everything. And she's provided mentorship and guidance, some of myself and other trustees from our district too. And very grateful she's willing to continue serving, and she's going to run to serve district, the state level fourteen in the fall too. So I really appreciate you being willing to do that too. And I think that'll be great for our students.
Yes.
Fourteen?
Yes.
So thank you.
It gets Karen County, though.
Twenty-five years in the military, retired, and got involved with the schools. Had two boys, one entering high school, one entering middle school, and wanted to be more involved, and gone a lot, a lot of appointments and other, and I think hasn't experienced that. I started substitute teaching and volunteering, served on a lot of committees, and felt like I had something to offer more from the running large organizations and helping with bonds and other programs too. So then served four years on the Carroll School Board. Two were great, we got a lot of things accomplished, including a bond, a lot of great programs for our students too. Then a couple of tough years too, with the challenges they're out to. So I really appreciate you guys willing to serve our students out there with that framework. That's absolutely the role of the trustees out there. To bridge the community and figure out how to help our students be the best they can be. Thanks, Mark.
Thank you.
All right, now I'm going to turn it over to Louis and Dave to introduce themselves.
Hello, my name's Dave Stein. I see a lot of familiar faces, so I'm sorry if you've heard some of this stuff before. I was also a first grade teacher at HES, a parent of third grade student and a sixth grade student at HES and HMS. I'm also a veteran who served this great country of ours. Was a soldier and an army civilian for the last thirty or five years. I was born in Thailand, and I was raised in a small town in Pennsylvania by a single mom. So I'm intimately knowledgeable about having to go get free lunch tickets in the morning on Mondays. And they were orange tickets too, by the way, if you're curious. And it was an interesting thing, because you'd stand in line while everybody came and looked at you for getting your tickets. And then you have to turn in your orange ticket for your lunch, so it wasn't a really good feeling. But I spent my time in the Army all over the world. I went to Germany after airborne school. I've deployed to Kuwait, Saudi Arabia, and Iraq. I've been stationed in Korea, I said Germany already, and several other places in the United States. After leaving active duty in 2000, I began my career as a civilian federal criminal investigator and special agent. At that time, I started working white collar crimes. Let me back up one second. Before that, I was an active duty investigator, and I worked a lot of drug crimes, violent crimes, child abuse, child sex abuse crimes, those types of things. Fast forward to 2000, then I got out and started working white collar crimes. That had to deal with procurement fraud issues and army contract dollars, multimillion dollar army contracts. So during my time working with the Army, I was trained to be a firearm instructor, an active shooter, threat instructor, and a child abuse prevention investigator. Just to name a few of the extra things that I've done in the military. I've been married for thirteen years to my wife Anne. She's a first grade teacher here in elementary. I have two daughters, Presti and Parker. Presti's a third grader at HES, and Parker's a sixth grader at HMS. We like, we've called Grapevine home for the past ten years, and we enjoy, I enjoy being active in the community. I've coached my daughter's soccer teams, and been a assistant coach for softball teams. I believe my knowledge and training and experience make me the best choice for place for the Board of Trustees.
Good evening. I'm kind of like Dave in the same point that a lot of y'all have been at the other forums and very familiar faces. So some of this you may have heard before, like he said. But once again, my name's Louis Sullins, this is my wife here on the front row. We just celebrated twenty-two years on this past April the eighth of being married. I've known her since third grade. Went with her for two weeks in seventh grade, still have the note that she said yes on. And then I had to convince her to go out with me all the way through college, but she said I needed to mature. Well, I'm not sure that many of y'all know me on full life. My mom told me I had to grow old when I grow up. So, speaking about my mom and dad, my mom and dad have been married for fifty-seven years. They were just high school sweethearts in Waco, Texas, and that's where my family's from. Seven generation Texas. My fourth, my fourth generation, great grandfather was one of the original founders of Fort Fisher in Waco, Texas, that built it. He's actually buried there. With that being said, I want to tell you a little bit about more of my business background and my service background, because apparently my business background has come under question online, that I'm not a financial advisor and I don't manage clients' money. So I went to Texas A&amp;M, graduated in nineteen ninety-seven. I was in the Corps of Decks when I went down there. All I wanted to go to one university, and that was A&amp;M and being the Corps. Might have to do something, my dad told me, you can go to school anywhere you want, but your tuition's only paid a day ago. Anyways, on graduation, I went to work for a company called ADM, Archer Daniels Midland. And they're the largest grain merchandiser in the United States, if not the world, actually. And I ran a cool position, I ran fifty-two grain elevators that you see those big silos in Kansas, Oklahoma, and Texas. Actually ran them, bought the grain from the farmer, and then offset our position on the Chicago Board of Trade. We had two seats on the Chicago Board of Trade. Coolest thing I ever got to do was I actually got to go to the Chicago Board of Trade and actually trade on the floor, and also trade in the pit at the Chicago Virgital Exchange, which was really cool, if you remember the movie Trading Places. So then we moved here, I ran the two big grain elevators in Saginaw. We owned them for a year and a half, or the company did, I did not. And we said they were not able to, not be able to make money, so we sold them. So what do you do? You go from the Chicago Board of Trade to New York Stock Exchange and do a personal finance. So that's what I did. I've been with Merrill Lynch since 2005. We opened the Merrill Lynch office in April of 2006. I am a financial advisor. I manage all of my clients' money, I don't pass them off to anybody else. And with that being said, it gives me the understanding of the finances. When I joined the school board six years ago, my big deal was physical responsibility, understanding the P and L, and understanding our facilities. We had Becky, we had Mindy here, we had several, we had Jorge, several other trustees that were in the academic side of it. I had a kindergartner as well. I'm trying to think, six years ago, so she was in fifth grade and first grade, I think. So I was in elementary school. I was in blue and crowns and being a watchdog and working fall festivals and building games and so forth. And now it has progressed, now I'm in the academics, because I've got a freshman in high school at Colquitt Heritage, and I've got a sixth grader at CMS. And my family's been here for a long time, and I'm not going anywhere. Both of my groups were born right here at Grapevine High School. I lived in Grapevine for six years, and I've lived in Collegeville for sixteen years. It'll be this summer, and this is where we're staying. My parents bought a house at the end of the street when they retired seven years ago. I've been living in Kansas City for seventeen years, and my in-laws come here all the time. So that's a little bit about me that I haven't talked about in the past, so just want to give a little more personal about me.
All right, thank you. So before we begin tonight's discussion, just want to say that the event is sponsored by the Texas Bipartisan Alliance, who are a five oh one C four nonprofit volunteer organization. Our goal is to educate our local community on the importance of nonpartisan races such as city council and school board. And like I said, this is a new endeavor, and we hope to grow this. We're small right now, but we hope to grow in the future. And now I'll turn it over to Kimberly Barbara Davis.
Okay, y'all ready to get started?
That's great.
So let's ease here when there's only one person in for each place. I don't have to go over quite so many rules, but we will go ahead and say that we ask that everybody be courteous. You are welcome to record if you'd like. We have two cameras recording as well, and this will be available on the website. So you don't have to record, you're welcome to share, as long as it doesn't get in the way of the candidates being able to answer their questions. We do have our panelists, though we're going to be covering certain topics that are kind of hotbed issues right now, and they will have the time to ask follow-up questions, because only two of the four are here. Gives a little bit more flexibility on the schedule. But when we get to kind of the end of the allotted time, I will be the timekeeper, and I'll flash up. I'll try to give you some warning, and then time's up, and we're going to go on to another topic. We do have papers that we distributed throughout the room. If you have additional questions that you would like answered, we will give us about an hour to do the prepared questions by topic. And then we will have about thirty minutes at the end for any questions from the audience. And then at the end of Q and A, we will give you guys each a couple of minutes for closing and anything you might want to add that we didn't get to cover. So, fair enough?
Fair enough.
Okay, okay. So the first thing we wanted to ask, we actually have a couple of questions that aren't really big topics, but give us a ninety second, a couple minute version, and we'll start with you, Louis. If a parent comes to you regarding an issue in the district, what should a trustee do?
When you say an issue in the district, I thought more of it because there's, is it a district issue? Is it a child issue, is it a teacher issue?
You pick.
All right. I'm going to look around the grievance seat. So the question was, if a parent came to me and asked me a question if they had a district issue or issue, and I asked, is that a student issue, a parent issue, or even a curriculum, or a process, or just a general? You know, as a trustee, we have a couple of answers. One, thank you for your comments. Two, I'll pass it along to appropriate people, or I'll find out and get back to you. As many as y'all may and may not know, being a parent or not, it's been a while, if you have an issue with the district, or a student, or a teacher, we have a grievance policy. And a grievance policy, there's three levels. On the first grievance, you file it, and you meet with the teacher and the principal, okay? So you go to the campus and you meet with the teacher and the principal. If you don't like that answer, then you have ten days to respond or appeal, and the district has a few days to respond back. And then you meet someone at the administration, okay? And then it's the administration does the research, and then the parent or the student meets us with the administration. And then, if you still don't like that scenario or the outcome, then you can do a grievance three. This is statewide, the state allows us, it's a state policy. Then it comes before the board. And it's typically, well, it is closed session, meaning it's the grievance, whoever the party is, and seven board of trustees, the superintendent, and then usually administration that was part of that process. And then you have to make a ruling on that. With that being the case, there's also some times, like right now, my daughter had a friend over the house, and they were talking about to be principal, about, oh, wearing badges all day long where it's visible. Well, that's policy. I said, you have to wear your badge all day long. Oh, the vending machines, or other things. And so I'm like, hey, put a committee together and go meet with the principal. Well, they actually said, one of their friends is meeting with the principal next week about some of the changes in the policy. So if they come to me as a board of trustee, I am not allowed to speak on behalf of the district or the board. That is only the president's job. However, though, what I do for full transparency is when a parent comes to me, or somebody, a community member, taxpayer, I send an email over to Dr. Robin Ryan, into our board president. I don't go to staff, I don't go to administration. Then they can determine where it needs to go after that, because I cannot tell staff what to do. As a reminder, we have one employee. But a lot of the times, I can talk to the person through it and say, hey, go talk to the teacher, go talk to the principal, and most of the time it's resolved right there. Or I'll say, I'll find out, and then I'll put them in touch.
Thank you, Louis. Dave, I'm actually going to give you a quick question.
Yeah.
Because that was very thorough. Thank you very much. I'm going to go to my timekeeper position now.
Oh, sorry.
So Dave, hopefully this one's not too hard. How can the board work together if members of the board have differing opinions on a matter?
I think that's just communication. I mean, we all have differing opinions on various issues in life. How to raise kids, whatever. I had differing opinions with my wife on what to, how to punish my daughter for, no, she's not always right. How to do certain things with my daughters. Sometimes she thinks I'm heavy-handed, not mean to even, but you know, a little harsher than she might be, and sometimes I think she's a little too easy. But the reality of this is about communication. If we can't discuss, if we can't sit down and have an argument even about our issues or problems, and be able to stand up, shake hands, and move on about our business, we're not, excuse me, we're not ever going to get anything solved. So it's about communication. You have to be able to talk to one another, and in communication, you have to understand what we're saying. We don't, we don't talk to one another anymore. We have to find a way to be able to talk, to communicate, to discuss, to argue. But we have to be respectful, we have to be kind, we have to be understanding. We have different points of view about all kinds of manners of things. So it's about communication.
Thanks. Getting seasoned at this, you know, it's a little, a couple of weeks ago. Being in there, it's hard, I think, you know, I think we just, you know, they're going through. So the first area topic, it's a little umbrella of state laws, book banning, parental rights and responsibilities. So I'll leave that out there, if you want to hit on any of those too, and then I'll specifically ask you this question with the idea of also, you know, how are you going to work with those parents? The question is, how would you ensure selection of age-appropriate books? And do you support any banning of books based on, based either on a state criteria or on local community preferences? Dave, you go first, and we'll start switching back and forth, I'll move the answers first. If you guys aren't very perverted, so I'll just give you a chance to, to
You have two minutes.
Not go first this time.
I'd like to say first, I'm not for banning any books, just arbitrary banning of books. To ensure that the parents have a voice in that, I believe we have a policy in the district. There's committees that have been brought together to have book reviews. I do have to learn more about that and figure that process out. But the parents should be involved in reviewing the books that we have in our libraries. I know that they have to do with the teacs, and that certain books are required to be in libraries, and some of those books have controversial topics in them. Maybe they're a little more explicit about sex, or maybe there's more violence, or maybe there's some other subject matter in there that some people would be sensitive if their younger kids got older. So I think between the librarians, the administrations in the schools, and the parents, I think we can figure out where books should be, where they shouldn't be. I wouldn't want a book that has a lot of sexually explicit information in it to get in the hands of my third grader. But I understand that, you know, there's a need for some of that, that type of literature at the junior or senior level. We talk about AP courses, certain books that are required by the college boards for AP courses. Those have topics in them that if, at a younger age, would just be inappropriate. However, we still need them. So I think between the administration, the teachers, and the parents, we should be able to figure out where the books should be without having to throw them out, burn them, or do whatever that kind of may be.
I appreciate you, librarians and teachers in that discussions are a bit left out of this.
Dave did a really good job answering that, actually. So I am against banning books, period. And as you've seen on social media, they've come after me about this idea that I have about parent empowerment and parent control. And the whole discussion was, so you have Skybird. That's how we communicate with our parents, that's how the progress reports were recorded. And you can actually go into your child's Skybird and look at what they're reading, and what access they have and so forth, and get to their access to their syllabus and their curriculum. Now, Follet and Destiny are two softwares that we use for cataloging and checking out books. They just came out with a letter, we could go say, and that they are not going to put parent controls on Follet. That had nothing to do with my platform. We weren't using them. We are doing it within GCISD, within Skybird. We can build on our technology. I've visited with our Director of Technology, Kyle Berger, and our Dr. Blaine Goman, Director of Curriculum Instruction. We're moving forward with that. That has nothing to do with it. Regards to books, we have to have these books in libraries, period. Because just like Dave said, I'll reiterate, AP, Advanced Placement. Students have to have, take AP exams, Advanced Placement exams, to get into Ivy League colleges and colleges. You have Advanced Placement, you have dual credit, and then you have on-level classes. If we don't offer those classes or offer those books, we will lose our Advanced Placement accreditation, and we will not be the number one, one percent, top one percent in the United States, I mean, in Texas, and the top ten percent school in the United States. And also in regard to that, we understand that families have different beliefs, religions, philosophies. So that's why we want the parent environment or this parent portal within Skybird, so they can decide what to read and not read. Just for example, y'all have heard me say this. I had a, I had a sixth grade student, one of my meet and greets with his parents. He's a ninth grade English class, but he's, he can read at ninth grade level, but his experiences can't handle that, some of that context and maturity. Period. I feel really relaxed with y'all. It was, this is our sixth one?
That's six?
Six.
Five?
Five, oh, five, sorry.
Five forms, okay. Well, hopefully everybody knows where everybody stands. Have you always had two seats extra that were empty at your other forms?
I want to use your microphone on this. They have shown up only to the forms that they have supporters at. They have not shown up to any neutral or vouch voters.
Okay, so that would just be a comment I'd made. Thank you both for supporting your voters by giving them this opportunity to hear. And in this time where everything is very distracted, I think in terms of schools, when we have COVID happening, or when, you know, COVID's been here the last two years, and we're very distracted in these races, it is very refreshing to see two people come in and actually talk about school. So I hate to bring this topic up, because it's a little distracting. I'm going to talk about CRT, which is Critical Race Theory, Issues, Facts, Disunderstandings, and Navigating the Conflict. So I'm going to give a little bit of information, a little bit of background. CRT is a hot button topic around the country. While CRT is not mentioned in the Texas Central Knowledge and Skills RTEC standards, some parents feel CRT is being pushed into the classroom. Section twenty-eight point zero zero two two, again, for anybody wanting to know that code, you can look it up. Section twenty-eight point zero zero two two of the Texas Education Code States. I guess in point four of the Texas Education Code States. A teacher, administrator, or other employee of a state agency, school district, or an open enrollment charter school may not require or make part of a course inculcation in the concept that, there's a few points, that one race or sex is inherently superior to another race or sex. I want you to really pay attention to this, because I'm going to ask your question. An individual, by virtue of the individual's race or sex, is inherently racist, sexist, or oppressive, whether consciously or unconsciously. An individual should be discriminated against or receive adverse treatment solely or partly because of the individual's race or sex. An individual's moral character standing or worth is necessarily determined by the individual's race or sex. An individual, by virtue of the individual's race or sex, bears responsibility, blame, or guilt for actions committed by other members of the same race or sex. There's a lot. Meritocracy or traits such as hard work ethic are racist or sexist or were created by members of a particular race to oppress members of another race. The advent of slavery in the territory that is now in the United States constituted the true founding of the United States, or with respect to their relationship to American values, slavery, and racism, or anything other than deviations from, betrayals of, or failures to live up to the authentic founding principles of the United States, which include liberty and equality. Knowing what the law states, now that you've heard it, and I'm sure you've heard it a lot of times, do you have evidence that GCISD is teaching CRT? And if there is evidence of CRT being taught in the district, how would that be handled? You have ninety seconds each.
I'm actually going to go back to a previous question about books. For the record, as of Friday, there has been zero grievances or book complaints filed in our district. Zero. So all this noise, not a single parent has stepped forward and filed a look at a book, okay? CRT, wow, that was a long question, I've got now like sixty seconds. Okay, first of all, it is a buzzword, and it's a hot topic. And I believe that no one should be told they're going to fear it of anybody else. We live in the United States of America, where we welcome all people. Read our Constitution, okay? However, we need to teach our history. People know where we've been, and where we are at now, and where we need to go. That's why it's called history. We have to teach it. But at the same time, we have made lots of changes throughout their life, and we need to quit, we need to keep making changes through our life. And no, CRT is not in our district, it hasn't been in our district. Because if it was, and y'all have heard me say this, the Texas Education Agency, per the rules and recs that she just read, can, will, and have come into districts in the state of Texas, fired a superintendent, and taken over the board. And there has not been a complaint filed against us. If there was, the TEA would come in, do the review, and if it was being taught, they would remove us, and the state would take over our district. You want to repeat the question again?
The funny story about that is that I read those very lines last night, trying to teach myself a little bit about the state, the, I'm sorry, the Senate Bill Three that covers all of that. And I think the next line goes into, it only goes into one line that talks about shall not have any instruction about the six to the nineteen project. But CRT, so I got hit about this early, because I was the first one in the Grapevine Republican Forum to say against the advice of some people helping me with my campaign, that there was no CRT in the curriculum of GCISD. And I still stand by that. CRT is not allowed in the curriculum. It's by state law, the law that she read. It's one of those things about reading the laws, because you say, shall not, starts up there, and then you go sixteen paragraphs down, and you're describing something. Somebody can take a soundbite out of that and use it however they want, but the reality of it is, we're not allowed to have it in the district. That being said, CRT is such a broad topic. People don't understand what they say when they're saying CRT. They heard a buzzword somewhere about inclusivity or equity or something like that, and all of a sudden it's CRT. Everybody running around like Chicken Little calling CRT CRT. Well, the reality is, the teachers aren't teaching it, okay? If there is any material that comes into the district that somebody misconstrues to be some CRT-related issue, it may be in supplemental material that teachers use. And the teachers need to understand, and I think they do understand, that supplemental material has to follow the same line, the same guidelines as the curriculum, guided by the state. So I don't think it's around. I think it's a buzzword, and she gave you ten seconds.
Let me just say a quick follow-up. So what do you, how are teachers responding? How would a teacher respond to that question? What's, what are teachers doing right now that makes you think that they might take offense to this law that says, we will not do these things? And it automatically sort of indicates, I guess, alternately, we think, well, they are doing and it automatically sort of indicates, I guess, alternately, we think, well, they are doing these things? So how do teachers feel? What are teachers doing right now?
You're married to a teacher. It's a shame that a lot of our teachers, um, don't feel like they can come to a school board meeting or be on, or be out there and represent themselves as an individual and stand up for their profession, for fear of attack. That's one of the things I've always said for the six years that I've been on the board, that I want to protect our staff and protect our students. It goes back to me. There's stuff all over social media and all over in print that says, "I believe this, and I believe that." And I'm like, none of these people have come up and asked me. So I wish the teachers would speak up, uh, but I understand why they're not. I know of all the times I've been in classrooms, I was at Great Bonanza School last week. I was at Great Bonanza Elementary School last week, and they're like, Louis, we just want to teach. Just let us stay in our lane, let us teach these students. All this that goes on outside the building has no bearing on us. Our goal is teaching these students. But our teachers are under attack. And they're, and from what the ones I've taught, not all of them, but they feel like they're under attack, and they're, I don't want to say scared, but they're worried about if they speak up and, and defend themselves and the teacher, the curriculum, and maybe be attacked pretty hard.
So, teachers, I know a few. Most of my friends, I, most of the people I've met through my wife is, for a while, they're, being a law enforcement, you tend not to like people all that much sometimes. The reality of it is, is that, you know, I know a lot of teachers because of my wife, and my wife is a teacher. And I think that, uh, these types of subjects, the subject matters specifically, uh, makes them feel scared and nervous. And, uh, you know, prior to that sighting that you read, they, they talk about current events somewhere around a couple of paragraphs, some of the things that they will teach, and, and those are current events. And for our kids to be prepared to go to college at that next level, or the next level as an adult outside to a trade school, they have to understand what these things are, socialism, Marxism, they have to understand what those things are. Um, there's plenty of dads that I've talked to that have sent their, you know, their very conservative child, bring an unconservative upbringing, go to college and come back, and all of a sudden, you know, uh, they've got all the buzzwords, and they've got all of the paraphernalia of socialist or Marxist from college, and they're like, what happened? Well, they didn't understand it. They didn't, weren't exposed to any of that information or material. But I think teachers, to answer your question more correctly, I think teachers feel scared of, of to even broach the subject. It's a, it's a current event issue. Why wouldn't we be able to talk about that in school? But all of a sudden, then, they, they would be targeted, so.
David can talk about teachers.
I want to share several thoughts. One, a great article came out yesterday by Dr. Stone, former superintendent area, uh, CRT at the dinner table, um, which, uh, which she knew CRT before was Critical Race Theory, as above, where it was cultural relevance teaching, and how important it was, especially as our, our, uh, our, our student population becomes more diverse, to try to understand their backgrounds and connect with them too, to be just effective in the classroom. Uh, I appreciate what you said too about preparing our, our students though, especially from this area with the best in bridage. Uh, it's a shame they're not more prepared to engage and lead at the universities and wherever they're going down the road to. Um, okay. Good job, next topic. Charter schools. Uh, charter schools creation, authority, administration, financing, and impact on traditional ISDs. The Colleyville City Council has been approached by a charter school wanting to add a campus in GCISD. While charter schools are public schools, according to the most recent TEA school ratings, 58.6% of charters receive an A or B, while 86.2% of traditional public schools receive an A or B. 41.4% of charters receive either a C, D, or F rating, compared to 13.8% of traditional public schools. Charter schools may start a waiting list instead of taking every student. Having appointed instead of elected school board costs the state of Texas twice as much in sales tax revenue to operate, and would increase the Robin Hood payment from GCISD. Would you support adding a charter school in GCISD?
Charter schools. So the idea of a charter school, I believe, was an idea that came from the inner cities, the lower economic, uh, lower socio-economically, uh, lower socio-economically disadvantaged groups, uh, for failing schools. Um, so in the inner cities, the idea was there were failing schools, so they would have these charter schools come in and create, uh, a different school. And in some of those cases, that charter school was in the same building as the local school was. A lot of these that I read about are, I listen to books, my wife tells me that I can't read. But, uh, Thomas Sowell has a good book about charter schools, um, and it talks about New York City. Some of them are successful, some of them are less successful. Uh, but the reality of this is, we don't have a failing district. We have a pretty phenomenal district. We have a lot of programs. Um, I'm not going to tell you that we do everything perfect, because I don't know about everything we do. We have a broad, broad, uh, array of, of programs. I've got to meet people from IU University Prep, which is a phenomenal program. I've met people at Bridges, I've met instructors at Vista. Um, so I've been around the district trying to learn some of the issues and some of the things that we have out there, uh, which I'll continue to do as a board member as well. But charter schools, there's a funding issue, the state funds them a little bit higher than, um, state funds that come for, for ISD kids. Um, but they don't, charter schools don't pay from local taxes. The, the money doesn't come from local taxes, things like that. Um, I would imagine that the, one of the negative things for, uh, for our school or for a school would be if, if, to say, just using rough numbers, a thousand kids wanted to go to a charter school. Uh, that would, that would negatively impact our, uh, average daily attendance. Thank you very much. Um, there's, you know, ADA, and WADA, and I, I just don't have them all, but I'll, I'll get there. But no, we don't need a charter school in, uh, in GCISD.
I am 100% against a charter school in GCISD, period. Now, with that being said, you heard the statistics, and you heard the, the, uh, the grades of an A, B, C, or D rated school. In the state of Texas, charter schools started in 1995. You can go to the TEA, Texas Education Agency website, and just Google it, and it'll pull it right up. It's one of the first, I mean, you can just type in charter school. Anyway, started 1995. Currently, only 6% of the students in Texas go to a charter school. Charter schools are held to a different standard. Yes, you will hear that they are A rated, B rated, C rated, D rated. Yes, you will hear they take star testing. But they have more maneuverability on who they can accept and not accept. You heard him say about the waitlist. Public school, if you live in an ISD public school zoning, you have to provide that child education, no matter their ability, no matter their background, even if they just moved here from Russia. And I use that example because on the third week of school this year, I was at Heritage Elementary School, talking to Miss Simi, and she's like, Louis, I can't right now. I have a family that just moved here in third area that can't speak English. I'm just trying to get into where his classroom goes and how to teach him to walk in line or find over the cafeteria, so he knows we're going to eat lunch, and then trying to help the parents with that. We have 59 home spoken languages in our district, 57 of 59. But the point is, we are not a failing district. We are a top-rated district in the state of Texas. We are a top-rated district in the United States. We have a 96% graduation rate. If you go look at our graduations, so we, our diplomas, the state, this is on tape. We had zero students meet the minimum requirement for graduation last year. You're thinking, wait a minute, did they not meet it? No, they exceeded the minimum requirement for graduation. Exceeded. So we don't need a charter school, and to, he said the thousand. This number shows that they need 2,000 students to make a charter school work, which you take 2,000 students, take that away from our attendance, it would negatively impact us. We're not a failing school, and we're not going to be a failing school.
Yeah, just be ready. The charter schools are recruiting in Capella and are private pre-k's. So these kids aren't making a choice, the schools are choosing, and they want kids that perform well. So when you have kids that perform well, that's where the expansions happen.
And quick clarification, uh, charter schools is only third grade through 12th grade. It's not pre-k first or second grade.
Some of, some of ours are elementary.
Yeah, they start in third grade.
Where we are, they do K-5, but that's, it's, it just depends on where you are, a little further away. Um, so I'm going to switch to topic number four, which is property taxes, school finance, and Robin Hood. Um, another section, 48.2551, it's not as long, D. Uh, the Texas Education Code states, "TEA is responsible for setting the district's tier-one tax rate." This is the minimum amount a district must tax to receive funding for the most basic level of education. So here, who's controlling our taxes, right? This is the minimum amount, I'm sorry, I already said that. Uh, school dis, school boards may then add five pennies above this in enrichment funding. With school finance being dictated by the state legislature, what will your priorities be when it comes to time to set a school budget? I guess you would go first, Louis. And then the guy next to you in that empty seat can talk.
Oh, yeah, exactly. Uh, taxes, so we do set a tax rate. That's one of the five mandates for a school board is to propose a budget, I'm sorry, pass a budget, and set a tax rate. We do set your tax rate. Uh, I've been on the board six years, and in the last three years, we have lowered your effective tax rate 12.16 cents for the GCISD tax rate. And let me be very clear, we're all property owners here. Our taxes have gone up, our tax bill has gone up, because our property values have gone up, because we're a destination district, and house prices have gone up. So we have to continue to find the balance between our taxpayers and funding our school. The biggest issue we have is legis, education legislative, legislative meets every four years. So they set the rules. So we only know where our funding is for the next four years, and then they can change it in a biennial, when they recome back every two years. And sometimes they put mandates on us that they fund, and sometimes they put non-man, non-man, non-funded mandates on us. But I've shown that, that we have, in my six years here, we've only had one deficit budget, which was like 1.6 million, if I remember right. And I stayed in the last one, it was on a $180 million budget. Uh, I think it was actually a $186 million budget at that time. Um, I'm a proponent of, uh, you know, issuing bonds if we have to. And there again, the school board does not elect a bond, the voters elect a bond. We just call it to y'all. And if the community or the needs arise, there's a meeting put together, a stakehold, and we're going to it for about a year and a half, it's presented to the board, and then we call that election, and then the voters approve on it. But my record showed that we've lowered your taxes 12.16 cents over the last three years. And during that same time, we have given teachers anywhere from a 1% raise to a 2.5% raise, and also some one-time payments, um, at Christmas time as well during the mid-year, because our teachers were doing a good job of managing our expenditures and our budget, electricity and so forth, and so we could give, to return that back to the teachers.
Property taxes. So I pay them. Um, and I'll say. But really, uh, Robin Hood and recapture in terms like that, uh, I, I know we paid between 50 and 60 million dollars back to the state last year in, in recapture slash Robin Hood payments. Um, I know that our, uh, average attendance, daily attendance is the state's kind of average, which is another thing that contributes to, uh, how much we end up paying in our recapture. But he said, like he said, we're, we're a property-rich area, and that means that our property taxes are going to continue to go up. Has anybody ever been to your house to assess your value of your house? Knocked on your door and said, hey, how, you know, how many rooms do you have? Or how old is your house? And the, the state does that with the county, the county does that, and sets your tax, or your, your property values. Um, and if it doesn't go up sufficiently, uh, every year, uh, the state holds the county accountable for, for not doing that. Uh, that's why it's, it's advisable for you to go and, uh, what is that?
Protest your taxes.
Protest your taxes. That was a, that was a board election issue for you a couple of years ago. Um, but yeah, it's everybody's right. But, you know, this property tax is the mechanism that gets our schools funded. Um, I, I don't know if Robin Hood's right, wrong, or other. Uh, I do know that once I figure it out a little bit better than the known handle, I'll make a decision if it is to myself, and if it is, I'll be the person that advocates for whatever we can do to do, do that process better. But that's a state-level issue. Uh, it's not something that the, the school board has a, a great amount of, uh, authority over. So, uh, yeah, that's about all.
Well, I can pass up to roll in on that state level, it's a standard. I mean, the frustration, they, they made some corrections, but they're still, uh, I think with a starting goal of get to at least the state cover 50%, and they're, they're, they're really not even close yet. We're just going to keep seeing these values go up, and, and maybe they'll correct, but, um, these districts, I never realized how hard it is to, to, uh, even with the, you know, increased property values, you can be in a position in these, these districts where if, if you lower the rate too much, you'll still owe the same bill to the state, so you'll, you'll hurt yourself even further. So just hold the state accountable. Um, first off, that meant that just go to the general fund, and it's actually going to help those other districts too, and then to get that funding to state's part of, uh, of, of at least a 50% in our life. All right, star testing. Um, do you think the star test is an accurate indication of the academic health of a district? And what measurement of district performance matters most to you and why?
So, as the spouse of a teacher, I have gotten an earful about the star test. Um, she's a first-grade teacher, but she does want to move up eventually, and, you know, she'll be on this, maybe she'll be in a star testing grade, but, uh, I've gotten an earful about it. Um, no, I don't think that the star test is the way we should gauge the performance of the school district. Uh, our school district is currently rated as an A district in Texas. Um, the CCMR rating is a 95, I think 97% graduation rate, uh, 96, 97, we'll split hairs. Uh, we have a phenomenal school district. Uh, these kids, I got, I had the opportunity to speak to someone at a meet and greet at a coffee shop, and they are head and shoulders more prepared to go on to the next stage of their life than I was when I was 17. I was, you know, getting covered from a small town, trying to join the army at 16, had to bring my mom back to sign me in at 17, kind of thing. Um, these kids are, are intelligent, they're well-rounded, uh, they're motivated. Um, they're prepared for their next, uh, their next chapter. I think that's the gauge that you use to, to gauge the, the, the value or the, the performance of a school district. How, how our kids go through. Um, and I think we have some of, there was another one that I, I met with Leon Leo, and, uh, he told me that there was another statistic, and I'm going to try and use it. But it was about how many kids that start college after they leave GCISD and finish, we have a really high percentage of that. I'm sorry that that's a weird answer to that, but I, we, we do a really good job of that, so I just really wanted to say that.
It is, I wish I could know the number, but that was one of the reports we got on the board from the Shannon over. Uh, star testing, used to be tees, I mean, not tees, uh, tasks. Star testing is a pain, all right? It is a one-day snapshot. You know, as a parent, if you don't work, you stay at home, or the parent on the weekend, whatever, you know, some days we have good days, and some days we have bad days. We get out of the day, out of the park as a parent, some days we did not. We got ran over by a train. Some days at work, we have a great day, some days we have a horrible day at work. These students are the same way. A star test is one day. They may have woken up, something wasn't right, maybe they were hungry, maybe their parent yelled at them, maybe their hair wasn't right. I have $2, so I can speak to that. Uh, my point is, is that a star, we need some type of assessment, the star test is not it. And people want to say the star test is equated to a 100, 90, 80, and a 70. It's not. The state actually says that their objective is for the student to get 35 to 54% of the questions right. And if you land in that bandwidth, then you are passing. You are ready to be promoted to the next grade. So regrets here, but we've seen a lot of people, uh, our two opponents attack our school district on regards that we are failing, that we only have 65% passing in fourth grade, or, and then on like 56% passing or 55% passing in fifth grade math. Wrong. We have a 95% passing rate to go into the next grade across the district in GCISD, except for in fourth grade and fifth grade, and I think it's math and writing respectively. and I think it's math and writing respectively, and that's still above a seventy-five percent. Okay, that's why we're testing them in those grades of third, fifth, and sixth and eighth grade for star testing, because then we can put them on a personalized learning plan, oh, and then we have a ninety-six, ninety-seven percent graduation rate. That they're going off to be ready in the career, they're being, whatever career they choose, whether it's vocational, welding, E M T certification, or they're going to our military like they did at seventeen, or eighteen when they graduate, or if they're going into college.
I'm going to read another code, no, I'm tired of code. Okay, I asked you a little bit ago a follow-up question about teachers. And this one, just a little extra thing, I just want to say, Louis, I'm sorry, when I told you about the K five charter schools, you wouldn't know because you don't have charter schools in G C I S D, so good. And the other thing I would say is, the charter schools, they get away with a lot, they don't have to have the same standards that public schools do. And one of those public school standards is that in public schools, we have high-quality certified professional educators in all of our classrooms. And that's really important. We all know the relationship between a teacher and a student. A high-quality teacher is much better at reaching kids. So our charter school kids come back to us behind in fourth and fifth grade generally. So, and they only require a high school diploma, so you really don't want that choice for your community. But, so considering the nationwide shortage of teachers, what would be your plan to retain and recruit high-quality certified educators in G C I S D?
You're correct, it's a national problem, especially coming out of COVID. You've heard me say a lot of universities are closing their college of education because no one's willing to go into education. We have a great culture here, and that has been set by Dr. Robin Ryan, that has been set by our previous boards before me, and that has been set, I mean, you have Donald Walker here that was in the school board from nineteen eighty-five to nineteen ninety-two, and then you have Karen Deacon back here, I mean, it's their leadership that she was in the school board before me for nine years, I believe, or since. So it's this leadership. Teachers are still here. How do I know that? I was at Grapevine Elementary School on Thursday for Career Day, all right? Well, I got there after lunch, all the Career Day had already happened, so I got to go out on the playground and hand out pop samples and play with pre-K, kindergarten, first grade, and second grade. I was standing there with the third-grade teachers. One of them has been at Grapevine Elementary School for twenty-one years, one has been there for three years, one had been there for sixteen years, and then there was an intern there, and I asked her, I said, where are you from? She goes, I said, you grew up in the district. She goes, no, I grew up in Lewisville, my mom's a teacher in Lewisville, and I went to school there, but I wanted to come here because of the culture. Okay, she goes to U N T, she's here doing an internship at the G C I S D. I asked the teacher that had been there for five years, she went to Grapevine Elementary School, went through our middle school and our high school. So we have a culture within our district that teachers want to be in, and we have to maintain that. And I will tell you, if we lose Dr. Robin Ryan, or we lose Dr. Brad Stoudt, our administration team that has been here, we will regress, plain and simple. But we have to be a top place to work, we have to keep our class sizes the way they are, and we have to protect our teachers. And they want to be here because we have good parent involvement with them, and the P T As. The P T As support these teachers with grants, with the fall festivals, and the fall carnivals, and Holiday House and all that. They can give, they raise money and give it to the teachers. Like Grapevine Elementary School is buying a book vending machine for six thousand dollars, it's on their award agenda coming up. So when a kid reads, does something well, they get a token, and they get to go put it in the vending machine and get a book that they get to keep and read. So that's teachers getting to help students read, parents supporting them, and my time is up.
Hey, hold on one second, I just have a follow-up to that, but you said that, and I'll give you a different follow-up. You talked about, you talked about losing a superintendent, losing administrative staff, that kind of thing in this distractible world of Britain. What does bringing on uninformed, unknowledgeable school board members do?
Let me just catch my breath here first, I can take this.
Give him a minute now.
I've said on several boards, and disagreement, arguments are healthy. Because I don't want everybody to think like me, look like me, act like me, well, especially act like me, you guys must be this. They say that every single time. But my point is, we have workshops and we have open discussions. But when a decision is made in the boardroom, you have to stand behind it as a board, and you have to go out and lead. But it is very frustrating when you have board members that won't attend board training, or say one thing, and then they blindside you with another thing in the boardroom. And then they attack our admin and our staff by not doing their homework and asking the questions when they get their board packet on Wednesday, and spending twenty to thirty hours reading a hundred and, or two hundred pages over Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, and then asking their questions on Saturday so staff has time to respond to you. That is frustrating, and then you turn it into a seven-hour board meeting, and you have to educate them during a board meeting. If you're going to sit on this board, do your work. I've got to commend this guy right here. And the reason being, you heard him say he's been to Vista, he's been to Bridges, he's been to I University Prep, and I think he even said Cleatford Academy. I would love you to ask these two candidates, and the two candidates prior to that, that just kind of looked, have they even been to any of those schools?
No, I want you back to the original question, do you remember what it is? Considering the nationwide shortage of teachers, what would be your plan to retain and recruit teachers?
So I, whenever I talk about this and I preface this statement, it'll mean, sounds like it's oversimplified, okay? But it literally is communication. So I'm willing to talk to anybody. I've met with people, I've met one or two people in a coffee shop, I've been to a bunch of different places. I've been to different groups, we've been to five of these forums. If somebody calls me, emails me, texts me, if I can find the time, I go meet them, and then I talk to them. If it's talk to them about what I feel about as a board member, what I should be doing, or a problem or issue that they see, some C R T issues, some book banning issues, all that. I'll listen to anybody. I'll listen to any reasonable person that wants to sit down and have a conversation with me about an issue with the school board, with this district, with whatever the issue is. I may disagree with them, but I'll listen. That, to me, is communication. And if we can bring people together with different ideas, we can probably, hopefully, quiet some of these loud agenda, false flags, all of these types of issues from the outside that are just making noise. Ask one of them for a solution, ask one of them for an idea of how to fix one of those problems. Somebody said, next time I see somebody say C R T to me, I'm going to ask them, show them, show them to me, that kind of thing. But the district has to be prepared. There's a national survey of twelve hundred school districts and leaders. Two out of three of those reported shortage of qualified applicants to fill positions, that's nationally. In the same period of time, A F T in Texas surveyed thirty-eight hundred teachers in Texas. Sixty-six percent of them indicated they were considering not returning to teaching. Those are numbers, if they come true, even if half of those come true, we can't withstand that. G C I S D is a phenomenal district, and it has been in the years, it's been a destination district. It's been because of the culture that people want to stay here. But teachers have taught for low pay, since teaching was teaching. Teachers have taught for low pay and more work without additional pay, again, since teaching was teaching. The thing that's pushing teachers out the door now, early retirements for people that just don't want to be in the profession anymore, is this discourse we have going on in our communities. It's just, again, loud noise and finger pointing, and just making accusations about nothing. If you want to talk to me about solutions, let's sit down and talk. That's the way I'll be a board member.
Before you go on, I need to apologize to one of my fellow board trustees that I served with, Mitcham John Walker and Karen Deacon. And Mindy, truly apologize, because it was a pleasure to serve with her, and she was awesome to serve, and so I apologize, Mindy. So I was like, oh my gosh, I saw you defend her.
So then my follow-up to you, Dave, is thinking about the school board meetings and thinking about teachers being involved and engaged and leaving the profession. Have you been to school board meetings, and how about the others that are running for this role?
So even before I decided to run for school board, I've been to a couple of school board meetings, so I'll get to that. I've watched more online than I want to admit to before I decided to run. But since I've run, I've been there one, two, four meetings since I decided to run, I missed one, and I watched it online. I've even watched some of your old group of eight trainings, which are very interesting to see because it's a whole different dynamic than a regular board meeting. But I've done all those things, I don't know what they've done. I also know that, you know, when I told anybody that I was going to run for board, I met with several people right off the bat. I told them for, the first thing was, I'm not trying to tear down the district. I'm not trying to say all of these bad things about the district to make myself look to be the savior to come in and save the day, okay? We probably have some blemishes and problems and issues within the district that could be fine-tuned, some things like that. I'm not going to say in the perfect light of just imagination, but I'm not here to tear the district down to make myself look like the savior to come in. And there are some people in it that we're running with that may have been through some of that.
Topic seven, campaign contributions. Have you accepted or will you accept any direct or indirect financial or in-kind contributions from individuals or PACs outside of G C I S D? If so, will you report these contributions on your campaign finance reports on the date contributed and/or promised rather than at the end of the election cycle?
Can you repeat that question, Shannon?
Have you accepted or will you accept any direct or indirect financial or in-kind contributions from individuals or PACs outside of G C I S D? And if you have, will you report these contributions on your campaign finance reports on the date contributed and/or promised rather than at the end of the election cycle?
I have not and will not accept any campaign finance money from outside sources outside of G C I S D. When I decided to run, I had discussions about certain groups within the area, within G C I S D, that I wouldn't accept funds, support, or seek support of in the area. I think it's, I'm legally bound to, I thought I was legally bound to report things that I, money that I got contributed to me, so that was on my financial report, so I don't know that I could not do that on the day that I got it. So no, I don't think that there shouldn't be any outside funds brought into local elections, because all that is about an agenda. It's not about what we have here, it's not about our district, it's not about our community, it's about an agenda. It's about, and then I don't know what that agenda is, people have rumored what it might be, I don't know. But all that is about an agenda, and I really don't think that's, this is the local school board or local community is the place to do that. People don't understand that, you know, Colleyville, G C I S D, and Grapevine, although they're independent entities, we're co-dependent on one another. If we don't have a good school district, we won't have people that want to come live here, to populate a good town, to make a good town. If we don't have good towns for people to come and live in, they won't come here to be in a good school district, just for that. So sometimes it feels like the things you see and hear online and Facebook and things like that, it's almost like people are cutting their nose off to spite their face, just saying things that don't make any sense, they're just not, it's just not real. So I know, I won't take any money from any outside sources.
I will not take any money from any outside sources, with that being, and not disclose it. Let me explain. I will not take money from a PAC. In fact, both of our opponents, I was approached by, and I can't remember the name of it, Action Mobile PAC. Patriot Mobile. Patriot Mobile Act, I got a text message, said, hey, I'd love to meet with you, I see that you're running. And I said, sorry, I do not know who this is, and they responded back, they were the executive director of the Patriot Mobile Act. And so I looked and see where they were, they're a national organization, I'm like, we're a school district, nonpartisan school board. Democrat, Republican, doesn't matter to us, this is nonpartisan, we are here to teach and educate students. And I actually put it on my website, that they reached out to me, I will not meet with them, and here's the reason why. And I said, I'm a First Amendment, Second Amendment supporter, and et cetera. Lo and behold, two weeks later, there's a flyer that comes out with our two candidates' name on that. Now, I have taken outside money from my sister and my brother-in-law that live in Frisco, Texas, and it's on my financial report, okay? I think I've rewritten, this is my financial director right now, even though I'm the financial advisor. But I've taken about four thousand dollars in, a thousand of that is my mom and dad, five hundred is her mom and dad, five hundred's from my sister and brother-in-law that live in Frisco, and then multiple donors after that. I don't want outside money coming in here and buying this election. We've seen it happen with our Colleyville City Council, and I can speak to that because when I got my master trustee in two thousand and eighteen, we did a road trip to Midland Odessa where Empower Texans and the T Party started, and they bought their school board election there, and it was very contentious when we went in, and we did a case study on them, me and thirty-seven of my master trustee counterparts. And then they came to Colleyville, and that's what they're doing here, they're trying to change their name to T T P, True Texas Project, et cetera. But no, I will not accept outside money and not disclaim it, okay? I have accepted outside money at G C I S D, but they are family members, and they are on my financial report. And I will take my mom's money, because I did pick my mom and dad's nursing home.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
How can the school board hold itself accountable to taxpayers who do not have children in G C I S D schools?
How do we hold ourselves accountable to taxpayers that don't have children? Okay, yes, so we do a couple of things. One is, they live here, they either moved here for retirement because of quality of life, or number two, they lived here because they had students and wanted to go through our system. Well, whether their children have graduated, they're empty nesters, they have a piece of property, and that property needs to be protected, and that value needs to be protected. And they're also one of our largest voting populations, and so we need to support them. And one of the things that we need to do is the homestead exemption, you know, where the state, there's going to be amendment on the May seventh ballot to give from a twenty-five thousand to a forty thousand dollar homestead exemption, so it gives them tax relief. And plus, our sixty-five and older within the state of Texas, their property taxes are locked in from that standpoint. But yes, they need to help us accountable and turn out and vote, because guess what? Depending, and I'll take the words from him, we're co-dependent with U L S, Grapevine, and Colleyville, and we're an open enrollment district. If they want their property values and home values to stay and have the quality of life we have here, we've got to make sure we're a destination district, because we're the largest employer in Colleyville, and we're the second largest employer, the third largest employer in Grapevine, only behind D F W Airport and Vader Hospital. So I mean, we have two thousand employees, thirteen thousand students, and eighty-seven thousand residents, and thirty-six thousand homes. That's a lot of people that we have responsibility to, more than the city council does. So we've got to make sure we take care of them.
Well, like Louis, and I think the best way we can hold ourselves accountable is being good stewards of the tax dollars. Not, you know, finding the best ways to squeeze every penny out of every dollar, not the golden ones or the copper ones, but, you know, I still have to learn about them. But, you know, being good stewards of the tax dollars and maintaining this great district that we have. That's the only thing I can think of to do.
Excellent, we can move on to some audience questions, but I guess we can still keep coming, I see some here. Excellent. Number one, how do you feel about school choice parents have for their children within G C I S D? How do you feel about school choice parents? About? About...
The programs of choice of parents.
Okay. How for their children within GCISD? Okay, there's an example. How for their children within GCISD? Example programs include Collegiate Academy, Advent, Aspire, I University Prep, STEM Academy, Tech Center, Dual Language.
How do I feel about those? I think they're pretty awesome. We have a lot of really cool programs. I think we've got some, even in the CTE, when I first came when all this started, I was reading some CTE, we had some national level within their disciplines. We had some national level champions in CTE. Now, I don't know if that's... I mean, CTE, as I understand it, some of the flower arranging and some of those other types of things. I think it was one of them was flower arranging, they had been one of the national champions. But we had, I don't, we had, I don't want to blow this number, but eight, nine, 10 national champions in some of those CTE disciplines. We had one team that were, they ended up in fourth place in an international competition. These are all students that came from GCISD, you know? That is pretty phenomenal. Bridges Academy was one. I'm going to be arm wrestling, if I get on the board, I'm going to be arm wrestling for, to be the representative from the board for Bridges Academy. Those people are doing some really good work down there. That was very impressive. We had a juggling exhibition, I tried to juggle like... But we have some phenomenal, we have phenomenal programs in GCISD, and I couldn't understand why anybody wouldn't like those or wouldn't want to advocate for those or champion those efforts. I don't understand.
School of choice is very important. In fact, our first graduating class of Aspire is graduating this year, and I believe it started in the third grade, and then we've added it, added a grade each year all the way through. Our programs in our school district are not because the board sat around and thanked it and said, "Oh, hey, let's start Aspire. Hey, let's start Dual Language. Let's start Gifted and Talented." No, that was the community. It was needed. Our students needed it, our parents needed it for the diversity of our students. And so from that, we have built all these programs that are just phenomenal. I mean, we had 122 national semifinalists in the last three years. We have 20, I think, 17 this year. And then going back to the CTE, you can call it vocational, or you call it career tech and educational. And within that, we have 34 accreditations for EMTs, nurses. In fact, we're sending 22 students next, I'm sorry, yeah, next, this week, to Atlanta for DECA, for the international competition. 22 students. They won already state. Now they're running international in Atlanta. We have to have, public school is a choice, and we have choices within that to meet every need because you've heard me say this, every student deserves a year's worth of growth of their education from wherever they start on day one to when they graduate, I mean, not graduate, but move up to next year. Hang on, I want to add something else right quick. Just like last week, I was at Grapevine High School, and they are building a rocket. April 28th, they're going to Jacksonville to launch a rocket that's going to go 2,000 feet and could be subsonic. I mean, that's the kind of stuff we're doing. I mean, they're building a rocket that's six feet tall that they're going to shoot out.
DFW apartment like you.
No, you actually got to go too soon. It's kind of funny you say that. There's a rancher that has donated this land, he's got like 3,000 acres, and you have to have an inspection site and then drive down a mile, and FFA's got to be there, and different certifications, and even like, I mean, there's law enforcement there because of the high power of these rockets. I mean, it's a secure site. You can't get in unless you have a wristband.
Awesome.
And it's cool.
All right, here's another audience question. What is the importance of school board, of the school board being nonpartisan? And should that remain, or why, or why not?
One more time. I want to make sure.
What's the importance of school boards being nonpartisan?
We should be nonpartisan because at the end of the day, we are teaching students. We have to prepare these students to be citizens within our community, within our state, and within our United States, to be citizens. And whether they're going into college, or whether they're going into career and getting the certification that we teach, we have to make sure that they can be a benefit to society in whatever path they choose, and even if it's military. But we do not need to sit here and have a Republican, Democratic debate at a school board meeting because that's not what children's are. They're not sitting, kid in third grade's not going, "I'm a Republican." Kid in third grade's not going, "I'm a Democrat." That has no place... Now, we need to teach that with US history and Texas history and teach them about that, but it should not be part of the decision-making process of the seven of us to determine what we do as a school district and what policy procedures we put in place.
I'll just say this, that there's no room for politics on the school board. Politics tends to divide your loyalties. And our loyalties on the school board, as I see it, my naive opinion, is that our loyalties are to the students, and we need to get, make sure that they have a good education. We make, we have to do everything we can to create the atmosphere for them to learn. And we have to support our teachers because the teachers are the ones that provide the education. So there's no room for partisan behavior on the school board. We just need to be about solid progress and getting things done for the kids.
Number three, to what extent should a district's K through 12 curriculum reflect trends in collegiate and workforce job skills and traits?
One more time.
To what extent should a district's K through 12 curriculum reflect trends in collegiate and workforce job skills and traits?
The job of school board is to prepare our kids for their futures. That being said, I don't know enough about that process, you know, all of the things that go into that. I would say that in a situation like that, maybe we would tend to, the pendulum for education would swing too often or maybe just too frequently if we got involved in chasing trends. I think in general, we should bring people in from the outside, from industry, from government, to help our kids to get an idea what they should be learning or where they should be going. Curriculums divide our... Curriculum is provided by the state through TEA, but other than that, I wouldn't want to chase too often the trends for curriculum.
Yeah, TEA determines our curriculum, but it's guardrails. You all heard me say that. It's guardrails, like going down the highway. So we have bandwidth in between to meet the needs of our students and what's going on in the workforce and the military. You know, a lot of people say, "Hey, we got to get back to the basics." And people think the basics are the core, reading, writing, arithmetic, and history or science, the five, I'm sorry, I said four. What about technology? We have an esports team, okay? We had a team come, our esports team started, and esports, where y'all don't know, it's gaming. For somebody I don't know, it's gaming, okay? You're like, "Really? There's an esports team that play games?" "Yes, they do." And believe it or not, they won a state title. And it was funny because if you remember two years ago, we had our national, we had our baseball team that won, the Colleyville Heritage that won the state title. Many of y'all remember, had Bobby Witt Jr. on there, and Mason Greer, and several other kids. Anyways, that same night, we're making the presentation for the state to both of them. And I asked the kid, I said, "Hey, how do you prepare for esports?" He goes, "We watch game film. We watch the other team. We look at how they win, how their moves are, what player they're going to put in, when they're going to substitute that player." And you should see these baseball students go, "What?" I mean, so my point is, is that we have to teach to what these students need and the careers that they choose to go into and be able to provide them those options, just like I said earlier about, it's the community and the students that determine what we teach them in terms of being prepared for their future. It's not our future. It's not my future. It's not the teacher's future. Now, it is because they're going to be leaving this country someday and running these businesses, but it's their future so that we can prepare them to do what they want to do, not what we want them to do.
All right, more from the audience. Are charter schools in Texas required to implement IDPs? Individual education plans? Charter schools? An individual education plan is for a student that needs to have an individual education plan. A lot of times, it's for special ed kids or kids that just need, or can be dyslexic, dyslexia or whatever.
So I cannot answer that question because I have not done my research on charter schools, and it's not something I need to learn about because we're a top performing district and a charter school doesn't belong here. Now, I will say, within our public school system, we have 504s, and we have personalized learning plans, and then we have, I'm drawing, IEP, which is an intervention for the student with, if they have dyslexia, or if they're autism, or they have special needs, or whatever the case may be, even if they're GT or Aspire, they may have to, the course rigor and material may need to be presented to them in a different way. Or even do our English language learners, you know, where they speak Spanish, but English language is their second. And so, yes, but charter school, I can't answer because it has no place here.
I don't know, to be honest with you. And charter schools have to follow the state laws. I would imagine they would have to, but we have all that stuff at GCISD, so there really isn't a need like, you know, who we are, what we stand, there's some really need for a charter school, so, but I don't know for real.
Yes, charter schools, they pretty much don't serve kids with disabilities. There are a couple, maybe, but...
Is that by selection, though?
That is, yes.
Because if they had them there, they would probably have to do it.
They moved them back, yes. And then the second question here is, what happens if a child in a charter school has a suspected disability? Does GCISD do the eval, or the evaluation? And I'll just skip it and let you know, GCISD would not, well, they probably would because the charter school would reject them. However, it would get to the point where if that kid couldn't perform in their school, then they would send them back to their district, and then that poor child would have to be tested in GCISD, often behind a few years. So it's not a good, it's not a good, they got different rules.
And I just want to add, it's not just theoretical, some of this, and we've been facing some of the districts in the area, I know Louisville was one, there was others, significant data, since there had been for-profit charter schools competing in those districts for a while too, of how many students were coming back who had their learning challenges had not been addressed, and what a burden that is for those districts. I mean, they've lost, and with them, they're coming back so far behind too, so that's absolutely the DFW area that's a concern for all. Now, next question. How can teachers feel safe when parents go on podcasts like Southlake's Wise Guy Talks and brag about having a list of over 30 teachers who need to go?
The question is, how can they feel safe? I honestly, I don't know how they can. If that's the type of behavior that we have going on in our communities, I wouldn't know why a teacher would feel safe. That being said, it's our job, my job, on the board, if I got on the board, to make sure that, you know, we listen to the community and try to squash some of that nonsense because that's just crazy. It's a lot to be controversial, but the targeting of teachers is, I can't really talk about that right now because it's really, I don't have the proper language to describe it. We went through a period of time of targeting police officers and defunding the police, and then we went through COVID, and everything was fine at the beginning of COVID, but then we started targeting our medical professionals. And we got at the end of COVID, and now we started targeting our teachers. Although the thing that they all have in common are people that have professions in service, in service to their communities. We, as a community, will not survive if we can't get that type of behavior under control. So the answer to your question is, I don't know how a teacher would feel safe in the community that's behaving like that.
Well stated, very well stated. The only thing I'd really add to that is, you know, I actually wrote this on my, for my closing comments when we're talking about the public and the criminal and school board is, outside politics and outside loud voices and outside disruptors do not belong in our school district. And when you have some question asked like that, that you have on a podcast, and these parents say, "I have a list of 30 teachers," who gives them the right to say they have a list of 30 teachers that need to go? Are they the principal? Have they sent their classroom and evaluated that teacher? No, they haven't. Have they filed a grievance? You heard me talk about earlier, a level one grievance, a level two, and a level three. You can file a grievance against a teacher. So unless it's gotten to level three, no name should be on that list. And so therefore, in GCISD, every teacher has a one-year contract. Some of our staff members have a two-year contract, depending on what their administration, like a principal, or a coach, or something of that level. But majority have one-year contracts. The principal does an informal evaluation of sitting in classes and of meeting one-on-one with that staff member, and that is turned over to administration and they're evaluated. And either their contract is renewed, or they're put on probation, okay? So yes, our teachers are under attack, you've heard me talk about it, but for a parent to sit here and, "I've got a list of 30 teachers that need to say or go," or on Facebook, that has no place being around here because they're not qualified to say that, and they haven't gone through the proper channels. And I've been on the board six years, and I've yet to have agreements filed against any staff. Now, we've had a problem against the school board.
So I did my question. I appreciate both your answers. So with my experience in Southlake Carroll, references, some of that, you know, the history in Southlake Carroll has been referenced now as it's a playbook or a model to follow. Parts of that are hundreds of record requests on teachers, on administration, on school board members, looking to find anything and then vilify that. And that, that then, you know, allows for then that we can come fix that, or this is what we need, you know, that gives you that, that's, here's the problem, we identified and that, you know, by showing these, many thousand cuts, these negative things to, clearly they're up to no good, and they're hiding things. It really hurts the students, and it hurts the students because you lose teachers, you lose administrators, like principals. That has gone on in this district next door. Some really good teachers, principals, administrators have left this area because, to quote this, how they did not feel safe anymore. So the way they feel safe is to leave and go somewhere where they feel valued, appreciate their talents too. So I'm pleased this is just to continue to hurt our students, that we continue on this path, or think that this playbook is for any party to follow anymore. Thanks for letting me add to that.
Yeah, he's lived it. And we all are going to be benefiting from, unfortunately, what's happened in Southlake because the teachers are looking elsewhere. And that's really a shame, and it's awful. One last question, and then it's time for our two-minute closing. But the question is, what do you want for the kids of GCISD?
What do I want for the kids of GCISD? I want them to graduate or go on and be happy. Look, I'm a father of two daughters. You know, I would love for one of them to come take over my business, and I'd love for one of them to take over my wife's business because we're both independent business owners. But I know that's not their dream, and they're freshmen in high school in sixth grade, they don't know what they want to do yet. I mean, at one point, a youngest one would be a dolphin trainer, okay? My oldest one would be a veterinarian, all right? Which I'd love, but she could go ahead and then, hopefully. But my point is this, it's not for me as a school board member to determine what this child to do. You heard it, let me say earlier, it's not my education, and it's not me telling them what to do, but we have to give them school of choice and program of choice so they can decide. Now, let's even take it a step further. We have 27% economic disadvantage in this panel. Now, let's even take it a step further. We have twenty-seven percent economic disadvantage in this town, okay? We get federal money, we, the school board actually was under attack for this during COVID by our Colleyville City Council. We get federal money to feed our economic disadvantage. We were serving breakfast and lunches out of the back of buses during COVID and extra meals on Friday because we have students that come to school because that's the only meal they're gonna get. And sometimes we give them extra meals to feed younger siblings that are not enrolled in our school at home. Some of them come to our school because it's the only place they feel safe. So as a school district, I want students to feel safe. I want to have food in their stomach and I want them to get a good education and know that they matter. Because sometimes at home, they don't matter to their parents. Everybody can have a mom and dad, but not everybody gets to have a parent. And our teachers are mom, are parents to some of these students and it's the only place that they feel loved. So that's what I want for our students.
I guess I can parrot all of that. Um, I want our, I want our kids to feel safe at school. I want them to feel uh like they matter. Uh, but I want them, most of all, I want them to be able to be whatever they wanna be, whatever they decide they wanna be, whenever they decide they wanna be. I wanna be a part of an organization that gives them the tools to do those things. I think GCISD already is that. I I think we do a very good job of that in the district of sending these kids. I told you, I I got to sit down with some seniors um and and I asked them about CRT. And several of them told me that they didn't heard about it until Dr. Whitfield was here. I said, okay. But the one thing that they did tell me that that was upsetting is they felt like they were robbed of part of their senior year. They didn't get to do some things, uh COVID, um, and then the Dr. Whitfield thing really heated up uh around the, around the this, that this past year. Um, but that's what they they told me. I just want them to be able to go and get the education that that they can get here um and go on and do whatever they wanna do. One more from the audience. They're ready for that. Let's wrap up. Uh, there has been a lot of discussion about the new director of communications. What is your position? Is this needed or not? So I've said some things about communication, but I don't know how many people we have in our communication section, uh, what they do. I think that some of the things that we've had a problem with in the past dealt with communication from the district. I don't know if that fell on anybody's shoulders as a fault or an issue or or what that was. Um, but I would say that we need somebody within the district that's capable of dealing with communicating with the di- with the community uh during emergencies, during uh situations that happen throughout the district. But um for sure, we need somebody. I don't know if that's the person that we need in the position. I don't even know what that position is. I'll learn it. I'll figure that out. Um, but we need somebody uh within the district to be able to communicate with the community.
Can you read the question one more time?
Absolutely. There's been a lot of discussion about the new director of communications. What is your position? Is this needed or not?
Absolutely. One hundred percent. We need a director of communications. Um, I can speak to it because I'm been on the board. Uh, we have lacked in our communication and we have lacked outside politics and outside of loud voices being disruptors within our school district. And we have not controlled the narrative and we have not con- told the story very well from a GCISD standpoint, from a parent's standpoint, and a student's parent's standpoint. And if I'm not mistaken, I think one of the forums, they asked about if we needed seven people within communications. Look, you made the comment a while ago. We actually had to hire somebody because of the Public Information Act that some loud disruptive voices were being requested. For example, I'll just tell you because you can go look on our website and type in PIA and you can see all the requests and you can see who asked them. They asked one of me. I have to turn over all of my emails, text messages, Facebook posts, and my personal emails. When I say emails, I don't mean just GCISD. I mean my personal Gmail account over from Janu- I mean from December first through April eleventh. I have to turn all that over. Out my personal text message. Is that not crazy? Okay? I mean, my point to this is, is that yes, we need communications, but we had to hire somebody several years ago to handle all those requests because, oh, by the way, some of our HR department was handling this, some of our accounting, because it'd be ten thousand pages of copies that we have to provide to them, alright? So yes, communications is very important, just like serving as a board, just like as a parent, just like as a teacher or a student, communication is key. So it is a very important position and I voted for it and I approved it and I'll stick behind it.
Alright, now is the time for you to wrap it up. Two minutes for closing statements, please.
First, I'd like to thank y'all. This has actually been really good. I'd like to, one, having two knowledgeable moderators and to Kimberly for as well for asking the questions, being the timekeeper and a former board trustee as well. We have four of, we have four of them here this evening. Uh, look, you, I have participated in every forum. I have not turned down any opportunity to visit with anybody. Uh, I have been attacked online saying that I have not responded to emails or Facebook. Those people have been at every forum, but they've never come up to me and asked me a question afterwards. Uh, I'm available. If you wanna meet with me, I've had two meet and greets and I've had, well, I've actually had four. I've had two coffees, a crawfish boil, and a meet and greet at someone's house. And I've got one or two more planned that are coming up. My point is this, I'm available. If you wanna know me, reach out to me and I'll meet with you. The other thing is, I'm here for the kids because a lot of times, you've heard me talk about the teachers. We, a lot of these students won't advocate for themselves. Sometimes my own two daughters won't advocate for themselves when they were little because they're scared or nervous, whatever the case may be. We have to make sure these students advocate for themselves and we empower them to make choices for their education to be of benefit. And the other side is that we have to protect our staff and we have to protect our administration because we've lost eleven superintendents in North Texas, eleven. And I'm gonna go on the record saying this, I am here to protect Dr. Robin Ryan. We cannot lose him. If this board changes, he is gone and will probably go off and make two hundred thousand dollars more. So you just gave him a massive pay raise and then who are we gonna hire? Okay? At the end of the day, I'm a conservative. I'm here for the students. And I would appreciate your vote. I'm your current board of trustees, place three, and my perfect no. Is the board perfect? No. Just ask my wife and my kids. My two daughters will tell you that. But I'm willing to listen and I'm willing to make changes and I'm here for the students and I'm here for the right reasons. So I would appreciate your support for place three for school board. Thank you.
So thank you very much. This has been a very different experience uh from previous. Wait, what's the lightning round question? I I thought that's what they were bringing up a minute ago. Uh, the reality is I I got into this because my wife had a conversation with a girlfriend uh that said that she may not come back. She's been a teacher for fifteen years. She said she may not come back. She said she knew about fifteen or twenty other teachers that may not do the same thing. Um, we have to look at this as not just about the board and GCISD. Uh, this is about our community. We can't allow loud voices uh of of just making stuff up, not not coming with solutions, you know, just trying to make divisive, uh, make us divided in the community. Colleyville, the, this, Colleyville's press has been negative in the national level uh and it's based around race. Uh, a couple of uh election cycles ago, um, with some things that made it to the national level news. We, GCISD, have made it to the national level of news based on negative issues with race. I'm sorry, and Southlake has had their issues as well, and that's a pretty close community to ours. Grapevine uh is currently having a fraud investigation at their uh of their city council or their, of their city employees. All of those things put together, if a group of people get a board, get elected to the board and they either run, Mr. Ryan, I'm sorry, either Dr. Ryan decides to leave or he's fired. Either way, that would probably ca- cause a cascading effect down for the administration and then the teachers. That will collapse a community. Then we end up like, you know, and again, I don't wanna be disparaging about it, but like years ago, I understand HEB was having some very big struggles in the school district area. Um, I understand they may be on an upward trajectory now, but we don't wanna go there. We just don't wanna, we just don't want that to happen. Um, I wanna advocate for the teachers. I wanna advocate for students. I wanna advocate for our school district because I think it's pretty great. I'll end, I'll end with this. Throughout this tumultuous thing that I had no idea what I was getting into, um, which is the understatement of my life, I would say that the the greatest thing is I've met some really, really great people. Some people that have been willing to step up and help me, provide guidance, assistance, whatever it was. Um, and it's it's changed my outlook on people a little bit. So when I told you before, coming from a law enforcement experience for for so long, I didn't really like too many people. It's it's changed me a little bit in this experience, so. Thank you very much for having us.
So we have a request. If you enjoy the forum and you enjoy the bipartisan nature of this organization, we would very much appreciate a donation on the website to help even just pay for this facility because obviously that had to be paid for so that we could all join together. Um, and we appreciate your support in that regard. Thank you very much, the two of you, for bringing your outside knowledge so we can get them around. This was a merger of a couple of different events um that had to be rescheduled because of ICE, they got rescheduled because we were attempting to find a date that everybody could come. And miraculously, other dates got scheduled on top of this date and then it kept being an inconvenient date. So despite three times rescheduling, this is where we are. But this forum um as as a hybrid was kinda cool. So uh thank you for for changing and shifting this a little bit for us. And sign the attendance list if you haven't. Give us your email address if you'd like to be on the website. And I'll turn it back over to Ashi. Thank you so much for being here.
This has been a great, great event. Um, and you know, it's not enough for everybody in this room to to come and listen and educate yourself on the issues that matter most in our local community. A lot of great people in this room. I see a lot of them in the community. Um, tell your friends. Have them tell their friends. Uh, you know, as I, as a resident of Colleyville, um, we moved here because of schools. We're not Southlake. We don't have the great business district. We're not Grapevine. We don't have that tax base. Colleyville, we have schools. That's why we moved here. Um, and so I I see what's at risk. Um, and so just educate yourself on the school board races, educate yourself on city council, if you're voting on the city council races. And uh as a token for our appreciation, we got Tracy and Dave. It's Texas bipartisan tumblers. Uh, white and blue. Uh, and I know even if Dave, if I had to force him to do that, Dave, yeah. Be there for us.
So that's a R beyond it.
And that, that concludes uh that concludes, uh, that concludes uh tonight's event. I thank you for coming and uh have a great evening.